Who was this again? Oh, I got the thing on. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I call the meeting of the Select Board to order today, June 28th, at 7:38 PM. I will accept a motion to open our meeting.
So may it.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'll take roll call. Mr. Gito.
Here.
Mr. McCrisky?
Here.
Vice Chair Cavie.
Here.
Mr. Carrara.
Here.
Thank you, and I am here. If you are able, I ask all to stand to salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
No, it's on now, Steve, thanks. I'd just like to say it's been one year since we've lost Al Pedro and his wife Aldina in a tragic accident last year. And if we could all just have a quick moment of silence, stand and have a quick moment for him. Al worked for the Public Works for like 30, 32 years, something like that. And I'd just like to recognize him. He was the picture of the Public Works, and his wife was a wonderful person. So please stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move to our first agenda item, citizens' comments. Are there any comments from our citizens, whether it's virtual or in the audience today? Yes, can you please approach the table with your name and precinct, please?
One more question.
Please state your name.
My name is Robert Cohen, precinct five.
Bob, you gotta use the mic so people can hear you at home.
My name is Robert Cohen, precinct five. That's all I ask you. Agenda six, and you don't want anything to talk about.
It's not, it's not a public hearing, Mr. Cohen.
I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
But I think the public should have a say to some of this too. I haven't heard and I'll listen to these people, but if you're gonna have all those people here, I think it's not up to my people to answer. I think maybe some of the comments might help too. That's the reason I'm asking.
Mr. Cohen, at this time, it's not a public hearing, so no at this time. Alrighty. Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? I cannot see anyone's hands. Let's move right along to our Select Board comments. And the first is, I'll start on the left, Mr. Gito.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. One, I think, Mark, I didn't get a chance to call you today. I just thought of this. We have a few people who are in the probationary period in employment, new employees of the town. And that's a time to make sure that the people are doing a fine job, what we expected when we hired them. And I just wanted to mention that because it's something that we really didn't talk about, and it's something that would be very easy to, with all the other things going, to pass over. And it's, it's an important time period. Another item is the, I was looking at the May expenditures for the town, and the Highway Department construction part seems to be much lower than it should be for, for the work to resurface the roads and do the other things that are needed in the town. And it was an item that was highlighted at the special town meeting. I think there was probably at least an hour or more spent on, on road surfacing. And I just would like to make sure that we either try to get that work in the pipeline or make sure that this doesn't happen again. I mean, that's something that we've been trying to deal with, I think, for some time. And the last item is that we got a letter from the ABCC of three violations in the town. And I, I've been sitting on this board for almost a year now. I haven't seen a letter like that before. I don't know how often we get letters like that, nor do I know how often the ABCC even comes out and does inspections. And I think if they're going to send letters to us saying there are three violations, they might want to send letters to us saying, "And we looked at 10 other places and there wasn't a problem." So I don't know who wants to get in touch with them and find out how this all works, but I, I don't think just getting that letter doesn't give me any information as to whether or not we're doing well, poorly, whether we're doing better than other communities, worse than other communities, and so on. So I just, those are the three items that I had.
Thank you. We'll research that. Mr. McCrisky, did you have any comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Just want to read something. I think it's time. We all saw a, I just call it a rag piece, that was written about our town recently. And I just wanted to read the following, which I'll try to make as brief as possible. So I was recently quoted in a print media article that needs to be corrected to reflect the full statement that I made. Following a brief conversation with a reporter about a story about our police department, I told the reporter I was not going to take part in any story aimed at painting the entire Stoughton Police Department as corrupt. At the conclusion of the conversation, I said to the reporter, and I quote, "Well, it sounds like you're gonna do the story you have to do, so I will do what I have to do to be sure that our residents have the information on the successes of the Stoughton Police Department. At no time did I warn or threaten a reporter about printing any story." And last, it was a little bit more, is I was contacted by a gentleman who did identify himself as a reporter for a major Boston newspaper. He wanted to speak about a former police officer who had resigned recently in the department. He knew I was a member of the Select Board, and he wanted to inquire about that issue, but never came before the Select Board. Accordingly, I respectfully declined to engage in any conversation that had to do with that subject, but rather indicated that, you know, I could discuss the great things that the department was doing to carry on. I attempted to share with the reporter the successes that have been achieved by our department, but he remained focused on the negative points that don't represent all of the men and women who serve the police department every day with dedication, professionalism, and excellence. There are many more successes that I thought were worth including in the story, but the reporter was interested, not interested in discussing them. The information I shared with the reporter was that in 2013, the Stoughton Police Department was awarded accreditation by the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission. In 2013, the police department was one of only 50 communities who achieved this level of policing excellence out of the 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I pointed out that as of the date of our conversation, the Stoughton Police Department has maintained that accreditation and is only one of 100 cities and towns currently in Massachusetts to achieve this level of policing excellence. It should be mentioned that the day that the targeted story was posted, the Stoughton Police Department and the town manager was awarded accreditation for the fourth consecutive time since 2013. I would argue that earning accreditation reflects the dedication, continuation of excellence policing, in policing in the town of Stoughton. There have been negative comments made about this story in social media, with many people adding to the misinformation. These negative comments that assume facts are not true, and nothing to move, do nothing to move our town forward. Our residents should know that the police officers who are hired to serve our community must take a Massachusetts civil service test and are placed on an eligibility list, selected from that eligibility list, when a vacancy occurs in the department. All candidates must pass a rigorous review process that is managed by the police chief, then in accordance with the Massachusetts general laws, civil service process, and then our town charter. The recommended, recommended candidates are appointed by the town manager. The appointment of police officers is a stringent process that is protected from involvement from the Select Board. I applaud every man and woman who decide to dedicate themselves to Stoughton's public safety as an employee of our town and as an elected member of the Stoughton Select Board. I will not apologize for standing up to anyone, including media outlets, in defending our town and those who serve it every day with professionalism and dedication. They deserve nothing less. Some quotes on police accreditation that come from the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission's website, and I encourage folks to please log on to masspoliceaccred.net and learn for yourself. It includes the prestigious status of law enforcement accreditation. Law enforcement accreditation is a badge of honor in the law enforcement profession. It is one of the best measures of a police department's compliance with professional law enforcement standards. So in closing, I'm proud to stand behind the Stoughton Police Department with everything in my experience in this town, and I'm proud we have a room full of firefighters tonight to thank you as well. All we have is our public safety. They're the front line. They're our homeland security. And for those people that want to go in a different direction, you know, I won't play with, play with that. All right? So I had to make that comment. That article was definitely something that was meant, and I've said to somebody else, "When you read it, how did you get there?" They said, "Through Facebook." And I said, "Then what?" And they said, "I went to the Boston Globe site, and there was an advertisement that popped up." There you go. That's what it's all about, selling papers. You had to go through the subscription page to get to the story. So, you know, I'm not gonna tolerate it, you know, and it's had to be said. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. What did you want us to do with that information? Record it into the records?
It is now because it's a part of the minutes.
Okay.
And, you know, I'll, I'll provide a condensed version for Deb, you know, so she can have that. But yeah, I, that's all I'm gonna be saying about that for now.
Thank you very much. And as I indicated at our last Select Board meeting, we will be meeting with, and we have been, meeting with Town Manager, Mr. Tisdale, and with the Chief of Police, and we will soon meet with, again, with our Town Council, Brian Winter, who's sitting here with us today, and we're scheduling meetings now. So moving right along to our Vice Chair Cavie.
So the only comment I had was on an update for the Community Paradigm Search for Town Manager, which is our next agenda item, number five. So I'll just hold off until we get there, and we'll, we'll cover it all in one, at one time. But going forward, I'll just, as part of the, if it's not a, if it's expressly put on the agenda, I'll just cover it during our comments. Thank you. No other comments.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cavie. Mr. Carrara. No comments. Town Manager comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Tisdale.
Thank you very much. I got several comments tonight. The Treasurer Collector, Paula Newt, would like to remind the water, sewer, and trash customers that the FY '22 fourth quarter water, sewer, and trash bills were due on June 16th. The demand bills will be mailed sometime around July 12th, 2022. Please attempt to pay the outstanding balance on your water, sewer, and trash bill before July 12th, 2022, so that the $15 demand fee is not added to the outstanding balance and a lien does not get placed on the FY '23 real estate tax. Paula would also like to remind the taxpayers that the FY '22 real estate and personal property demand bills were mailed May 16th, 2022, and were due May 30th, 2022. Please attempt to pay the demand bill in full so that the tax lien does not get placed on the taxed property. All first, second, third, and fourth quarter unpaid tax balances are subject to the interest of 14% from the first, second, third, and fourth quarters' due date. The fireworks are on for July 1st. We put a flyer out on the town website with some details. We'd like to just mention, for the soccer field, it is, we are trying to get blankets only for that, no chairs, as requested by the school department. The fireworks are on and scheduled for 9:30 PM at night. The last comment I have is I would like to congratulate our town, our team that applied for the grant for the Burgess Street Memorial Conservation Land Trail Improvements to improve several trail areas that are very wet and to construct a parking lot down in that area to make the whole area more accessible for everyone. We got the award letter today that we received $61,000 in grant funds, and I believe that was actually above what they recommended the award amount originally of $50,000. So we got the full amount of the construction cost. And there was actually a award ceremony today in Milton with the Lieutenant Governor. Jerry McDonnell from the Conservation Commission was in attendance. James Collin, our Environmental Affairs Officer, and Larry Langley, our GIS Coordinator, accepted the award. I'd like to just thank our Engineering Department for helping out with that. There was a lot of work and effort needed to put that application together. Craig Horstfall's here tonight. Mike Nolan from our department also helped out. It was a big team effort, so we're greatly appreciated. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. That's a lot of information. That's a lot of good information. Thank you, and thanks to your team. Let's move right along to our next agenda item.
Madam Chair.
And that is to discuss-
Madam Chair. Could somebody turn the air conditioner off if we're going to have a presentation of the fire?
Yes, Mr. Gito, Ms. LeBlanc is going to do that right now.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Our next agenda item is to discuss status of the Community Paradigm Search. I believe Mr. Lynch is virtual in attendance, and also we'll hear from Mr. McCrisky and our Vice Chair Cavie in that regard. They have a short presentation and a short update to provide us. Where are they in our search? And who should I hand the mic to? Is that Mr. Lynch first or Ms. Vice Chair Cavie?
I'll give a quick update.
Oh, great. Vice Chair Cavie.
Thank you. So I just want to give everyone a quick update. I'm gonna put this on the screens for everyone to see. Hopefully it's large enough, though, we'll have to see how it goes. But this was something I'll email to other members of the board. And I just, I put this together today. Going forward, I'll be able to send it to you on Fridays rather than seeing it the first time when we get here. So one second, let me just share this, this one item. So that's not particularly large, but it looks like I can-
Talk us through it, though.
Yeah, I'll talk you through it. So we'll start with, so Stoughton Town Manager Search Progress Report, June 28th, 2022. I'm presenting it, so Steve, okay, this is coming from, oh, am I still sharing? Okay. So just a little, little quote there from Aristotle. "We are what we repeatedly do. Excellence is a habit, not a virtue." Before I go too much into detail, I just want to lay out more or less how this report is going to be formatted. We'll have this project reports, status report, project status report page. This is gonna give you everything you really honestly want to know. It's going to provide an executive summary, a list of all the risks, issues, open items, key accomplishments, anything that's been accomplished over the last week, and then the next steps, the things that will be accomplished in the, in the following week. Next page is a timeline. This is our original schedule. These dates were, we're actually keeping pace with them, but I think they were originally just estimated. So there might be some, some changing we have to do of these, but, but we're, we should be sticking pretty close to this schedule. And the next item, last page, is really just, for anybody who's not familiar with, with what's referred to as a rag status, this just gives you an idea of what, what that really means. But this rag status, so we're in, overall, the projects in a green status. Executive summary items. This shop, this project is making progress and is on target to complete by our project closure date. The overall project status is green. I wanted to raise out the key, some of the key project risks that are associated with this. We've identified two that are important for us to consider going forward. I'm not telling anybody anything they don't already know, but as has been managed, mentioned in previous meetings, the, there's an extremely competitive market right now for town managers. And there might be ways of mitigating that that are worth discussing. One that is important for us to consider, I believe, is that one potential way of mitigating that is to, we may have to sort of ballast the competitive market with a higher salary offering if we want to get the quality of candidate that I think we all want. That's something that's gonna be a potential mitigation, but if anybody can come up with anything more clever, by all means, let me know. The next major risk right now is actually the effect that negative reporting in the press has had on, on Stoughton's reputation. And, you know, the people who are applying for this job are going to be looking in the papers and seeing what's happening here, and they're going to be watching meetings to see how the Select Board behaves. They're gonna be watching meetings from the Finance Committee to see how they behave. They're gonna be watching town meeting, see how town managers are treated throughout all this process. And unfortunately, in the press in particular, we've, we've taken a significant battering as a town, even though the most, I have to say, the reporting is mostly regarding things that happened 15 years ago, nevertheless hit the front page only last week. So that is what's in the front of people's minds. And I didn't have really necessarily a solution here, but a potential mitigation is, it may require some sort of consultation with a public relations firm, but there is something that we're definitely going to have to address this, and it's going to have an impact on our ability to get quality candidates. So we'll just drive by, dive right into the rest of the risks, risks, issues, and open items. So we've already covered the risks. Some of the issues right now that, in speaking with Community Paradigm, some of the issues they're having is they need a little more clarification on some of the internal contacts. And specifically, also, one of the other issues is responsiveness from Select Board members. This might not be an issue. I mean, I know there's, there's, I definitely, I regret having to do, call you out in public, but I wanted to ask, have you, Mr. Carrara, are, when you, I think they've been trying to get in touch with you, are you purposely keeping distance because of, of your wife's position? Or are, or do you want to, want to schedule a meeting, or is there something else?
Has nothing to do with who my wife is.
Okay.
It has everything to do with, "You don't call me at 4:00 in the afternoon, on a Saturday afternoon." She's called me once, I will get back to them, but I wanted questions answered here first to know what was going on. I'm not slowing them down. They've already sent out what they've had to do. They didn't say to us, "Oh, we're sending the questionnaire out to the department heads in the town. We just want to get their input." Who are we to these people that we hired that they can't wait two seconds?
Well, they certainly can. This, this issue is not something that they-
Well, the issue, I don't bring it up again about my wife, I'm telling you now. That's what I'm telling you. Don't bring it up and accuse-
Excuse me, excuse me. I just want to ask the question to add clarity. We have Mr. Lynch on the line, and did we say that we wanted to ask department heads to have them interviewed and get them involved in the, in the whole process?
Yeah.
I thought it was just gonna be us because Town Manager Dr. Grimm had only been, her term was one year, it was three years, and, and it's the same information. I found myself giving the same information over and over again, what I was looking for. And you know something to be honest about the whole thing? When I was interviewed, I thought of each of you as our, could possibly be our next town manager, because these are the characteristics I was looking for, because these are the characteristics I said verbally. And so if-
I appreciate that, Deborah, because I'm thinking the same thing.
Okay.
Dr. Grimm wasn't here that long.
No.
This company put her in position, and we have not turned over the whole town hall and evacuated it with the people. Robin had her group, she had different teams. Nothing has changed.
Nothing has changed.
Maybe a little sadness in some people's eyes, but you want to hire a town manager, the town managers come in and do their jobs. This gentleman's doing the job. He didn't have to have a flyer put out. He stepped right in and pulled the boots up and said, "I'll take care of Stoughton till you tell me what to do next."
That's right.
May I continue with this presentation?
Okay. Please, sorry about that.
Appreciate that.
But I haven't returned the call because I wanted to hear from, Lou had a statement, I had a question, I want that answered. Personally, I thought maybe we were gonna sit and look at Dr. Grimm's accomplishments that were good, and then maybe some of the other stuff that we didn't think was so good so we knew what we wanted in a town manager. I've already hired three, so I don't have a problem doing it myself.
I want to be honest with you. You're being very aggressive. If I've upset you, I apologize for that, but I'm not understanding exactly what you're trying to accomplish by, by scolding me publicly right now.
I'm not scolding you in public, Steve. I'm just telling you, I wanted to wait till the board, and everything seems to be moving in such a tangent that it's like a race to the end, and how fast we can get there.
This is something we're trying to get done by December. This is not moving too quickly, but I, I want to get this back and forth-
I think we should be thinking about what the quality that we want before the timing. Who's, who's holding up anything that's going on in this town hall? Nothing's falling apart.
Right now, nobody's, nobody's holding anything up, but this was an issue that was identified, and, and I think it's appropriate to, to discuss this.
No, no, you, you guys identified it and wanted to jam it out. Sometimes things take a little longer. If there isn't such a group out there standing at the door waiting to come in, then we might have to look a little bit. What if all these things come in and they're not quality, and they say, you know, maybe we might have to wait a little longer to see who comes out?
What if-
That's all I'm trying to tell you.
This back and forth is not appropriate. Right now, I'm, I'm trying to lay out the, some of the issues that we've identified, some of the open items. If you just reject them as issues, by all means. But when you say, "Don't ever tell me this, don't ever say this again," this is not-
You're reading so much, and we can't see it. Nothing was presented to us, and it's, it's like trying to follow a, a piece of rope that's going nowhere.
Yeah.
Nobody's holding on to it. I understood exactly what Chairman Roberts said. What she said was very proper, and I agreed with her. But I did not want to talk to this person till I, I got direction that maybe something shouldn't have been done because it's all over this town hall, and it's like, what is our word gonna be? We're just gonna answer to employees? Sometimes we have to be the ones who make decisions. Employees get paid to do what they're told. That's all I got to tell you.
Fair enough.
Maybe it's, maybe it's a bad thing, like I was told, I'm a bad-
I understand. It may be a matter of style. I actually like to ask people questions.
But I do have a question for you, Vice Chair Cavie. Do you have the profile that, the draft profile?
We do, yeah.
That Mr. Lynch, maybe you could share with that.
I'll move through the, through the remainder of this, but the-
Oh, okay, thank you.
So the, some of the open items that the-
Just a minute, Mr. Vice Chair Cavie.
Steve, if you, if you'd just indulge me for a moment.
Yes.
Because I just, very short. I've been commun-
I've been communicating with you on a regular basis. I thought until tonight, we were doing exactly what we said we were going to do. All right? You know, I remember we talked about having the employees have an opportunity to make a comment, which I personally don't think employees are there to do what they're told. I think our job, and I've said this since early 90s, is that our job is to encourage our employees to move forward. We should be supporting them. I want some input from our employees. I'm not going to go running right to it and whip it through based on what employees say, but if we don't listen to our employees, why do we have them? Why don't we just run everything? We're doing such a great job in so many areas, why don't we just do it? So, I just had to say that.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that, Mr. McCrisky, because I have received feedback from Mr. Tisdale and his direct supports. So these were the department heads. And they said that they were looking for someone that is going to be a true leader. They were looking for qualities similar to, to Dr. Grimm. And I know that part of the process was going to be, Mr. Lynch was going to interview each of the board members to see what we were looking for, like if we wanted someone that had to be local, and what does local mean? Does that mean local Massachusetts, or does that mean local in the region? And then other things we were looking for, someone that had a financial acumen, or someone that had economic development acumen, someone that was, that has, that's an attorney, someone that, that led a large organization. So all of this, I'm kind of really anxious and I'm excited to get to that profile that we all put together, and I'm looking forward to Mr. Carrera to add to that whole profile. And then, my understanding is we can move to the next step. But, so, department heads have given some feedback via, via me, but I don't know if there's anything in more detail that needs to happen in that regard. So you tell me, because where are we in the process? That's what, that's what we're here, that's the agenda item.
So there are some open items.
So, seeing everybody else has spoken on this, I will also. I, early on, talked with Sharon Flaherty, I believe is her name, who was the other person involved. Had a long conversation with her, and have had a couple of other conversations. I thought the process was working quite well. I think that we will have diverse views on what we're looking for. We're a diverse group of people, just like any other five people. And I think the process is to try to understand what those five views are, and try to get something that, that works for everybody, or works for the town. And to include the views of the people who work in the town. I mean, dropping somebody in who is absolutely not a fit for the town certainly isn't going to help produce a good management team. So I don't have any problem with the process that we've gone through so far. Joe, you might, you might be surprised that I agree with you yet again.
Trick, Lou, I had trick tonight.
And, you know, I don't know why we're bickering here. It doesn't seem like it's a productive way of, of doing business. If we have something to deal with, then we ought to find a time to do that, and we can have a public meeting on that and have a civil discussion. But, but shouting back and forth at one another, I don't think is a good way to, to conduct ourselves. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. So where are we, Vice Chair Kevy? Is the profile, the profile is incomplete?
Yeah, yeah.
And the profile.
I apologize, but if you allow me to just finish the presentation, we'll get all into this.
The department heads.
Like you just get past the first couple of lines, I swear it's in there. So there are some open items. One of them is the position statement, which we're going to be discussing tonight. That requires approval from us for them to move forward. And then they're also, are asking for some clarification on authorizations, and that's, more or less, they just kind of want to know, when they, when they speak to the board, who should they be speaking to? What items go to everybody, which items go maybe just to Joe and I, then we filter it to you guys? So they're just looking for some clarification on those kinds of questions, which we can, we can address going forward with everybody. So the key accomplishments for the last while, for the last week, is that they have reached out to each of the select board members individually, for the most part, that they have produced, so they sent questionnaires to the department heads, they received feedback from several of the heads, some in writing, some, and they've also spoken in person with, or spoken to several of them, one-on-one. And then they've also completed the draft position statement. Once again, what we're going to be voting, looking at today and approving or not approving. In the coming week, they, assuming they, we approve the position statement, they will begin advertising and active recruiting. So that is all in line with, with what we currently have documented in our, in our projected timeline. We are still on pace for all this. So I wanted to hand it to Bernie and Sharon, give them an opportunity to speak on, on the, sorry, the position statement, and then we can work with them to, any questions anybody has, any changes they want to make, now's the time to do it. So apologies for the time it took to get through that, but Bernie and Sharon, the floor is all yours.
Sure, thank you, thank you very much. That was a good summary. Excuse me. It's beginning to be outspoken to getting off almost all the board members at this point, these department heads. I mean, we're following, you know, I appreciate that, you know, a couple of members have gone through this before, one, two, or I guess three times. We've had the opportunity now to be involved in our town manager searches. We have a process that we use, and we certainly try to customize it to the needs of each community, but it's a process that's worked very successfully, and that's basically what we've been following as we've gone through this. You know, having spoken to the board before, and then having separate meeting with our liaisons, Steve and Joe, to sort of walk through this, and I know we've spoken to the chair about this process as well. And essentially, what we've done is we've, we've gathered information to develop that position statement. I don't want to, I don't want you to feel, I don't want anyone on the board to feel that we're rushing this, yet at the same time, most of the, most of the time, when we speak to boards, they're pushing us, move faster, move faster, why is this taking so long? We think it's important to do the initial work upfront, and that's why we do it, and take the time to do that. But we don't want you to feel that we're rushing you. You have, you have a goal to have someone in place certainly by the, you know, December timeframe. Now, we're on track right now to probably get someone by December 1st, but, you know, we're trying to meet your goal in doing that. We've submitted the draft position statement. Certainly, we encourage all the board members to review that, and then let us know what we've missed, what should be included, what shouldn't be included, and then we will, we will start our process of advertising the position, distributing the position statement and position announcement, and doing real active recruiting of trying to get you a good candidate. It is a very competitive market, and we, you know, each community has certain challenges that we have to try to explain to candidates as to why those issues or those challenges are surmountable, and we're prepared to try to do that out of Stoughton. Happy to take any questions, but at this point, it's really in the hands of the board to review that profile and get back to us with your comments.
Mr. Kevy, before board comments and questions, do you have anything as a follow-up summary?
No, no, I, that is, that's the full report, I'll send that over to you, email it to you. If you, if anybody has not received the position statement, I'll send that attached to the same document, so I'll make sure that everyone has the most recent update on the project and also the position statement.
I certainly have not seen anything.
Okay, then I'll send that over to you, I'll send it to the full board right now as we're speaking.
Am I the only one who hasn't?
I've not.
I've seen it.
Okay, so that, I'll make sure it gets to everybody, so everyone will get it, and we'll get a chance to review it, any changes you want made or reconsider, communicate that, I think, directly to, to Mr. Lynch, Ms. Flaherty, and they can, they can incorporate your, your thoughts directly into the document, and we'll go from there, and we'll start advertising.
All right, I'll start with Mr. Gito. Did you have any questions or comments about the process, about anything in this regard, this topic?
I gave my comments earlier. I just didn't get the information apparently that, that others have received, some others have received.
Thank you so much.
And I was wondering why, but I'll find that out later.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Mr. McCrisky? Mr. Carrera? Okay. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Lynch, for attending our meeting, and if Sharon is there, thank you, Sharon, as well.
You too, as well, thank you. All right, we'll, we'll, we'll wait to hear from Steve, Joe, I guess, and we'll go from.
Thank you, thank you. Let's move.
Thank you.
Bye now, have a good night.
So we're going to get from Steve, something written that basically is what he's presented before the weekend, next week, when is that going to happen?
Right now, I'm writing up the email, and you'll receive it in the next five minutes.
Thank you.
So you requested our last meeting, Mr. Gito, you wanted this to be a standing agenda item?
Well, I do.
Yes, and you wanted something in writing? And we're going to do the best we can to make sure that that happens. Thank you so much. Moving right along to our next agenda item, it's update on the fire station building project. It says votes may be taken, so what we'll hear is an update on a project, and at the end of the presentation, we will accept a motion to accept the report. Hand it over to you, Chief Carroll, Mr. Tisdell, and whoever else. Please state your name and, just love hearing your names.
Mark Tisdell, interim town manager.
Michael Carroll, chief of the fire department.
Thank you for having us tonight. We've got a status report, an update for the project, the fire station project. With me tonight is obviously Chief Carroll, our staff team that consists of the assistant town engineer Craig Horstfall, Sue Herman, Fran Brutinetti, the assistant chief, Jack Mekumba. I'm getting put on the spot here. I'm blanking out. Fran. Paul, Paul Gaffoon, our facilities, our DPW director, sorry, I apologize. And then we have our owners' project manager, Palmeroy, here today, and our architect, Dorn Wadia. We'll get right into the presentation. Next slide. Thank you. Pretty much, we have two goals of our presentation tonight. One is to update you on the schedule and the budget of the project, and two is to ask the board to accept that report, which allows our staff team to continue moving forward in the process. This slide explains that there's been a lot of work done essentially to the project to this point. There's been eight working group meetings since the ballot vote on February 1st, and there's been a lot of specialty design meetings, about a dozen of them since that date also. If you have any specific details on meeting dates, I can answer those later in the presentation. Next slide, please. This slide essentially shows what was presented to your board, I believe, August, September of last year. The rendering on the upper left was the Prospect Street Fire Station Building. It had a total square footage of 27,200, and as you can see, as the design has progressed, and we've looked at things very closely, we're able to reduce square footages down to 25,066 without reducing the program. Still the same building essentially, but things like storage spaces, hallways, stairwells, things like that, we were able to get a more efficient layout and design, which reduced the square footage approximately by 2,000 square feet. Next slide, please. Same, same picture as the one before, except this shows the, the first floor layout of the building. Again, what was presented to your board in August, September of last year is the rendering on the, is the layout on the left, and as you can see, our current design on the right looks pretty much the same, except for about 2,000 square feet less in square footage. Same number of bays, maintenance bay, and all the other areas remain the same. Next slide. This is our construction schedule. The white dots represent critical points in time. The second dot from the top, and the second dot from the, from the left is where we are currently. We are in the schematic design estimate phase. After we complete this phase, we move into design development, and then we have bid documents ready in January or February, and we anticipate to award bids for the Prospect Street Station in, in March of this, of this coming year, 2023. The, the red stars represent construction end dates. The first red star would be the Prospect Street Building, and the second red star is the Freeman Street Emergency Operations Center. The end date for the Prospect Street Building is August 2024, and the Freeman Street Building would be August 2025. Some main accomplishments throughout this process is listed on the slide. One, the OPM and architect are under contract. Hazmat survey and reports for both Prospect and Freeman Street have been completed. Geotechnical studies have been completed. We've gone through the fire department program and reconfirmed it. We've done room data sheets. As you can see, we did the exterior modeling is complete, schematic design is complete, schematic design estimate is complete, and the removal of the underground storage tank at Prospect, the Prospect Street site is underway. We've stayed on schedule to this point. Next slide. This is the budget update. As you can see, last time we presented to the board was in August 2021. The Prospect and Freeman Street buildings were estimated at 27, approximately 27.3 million. The Opera funds estimated at that point in time were 6.4 million, which would equate to our net borrowing of $21 million. The current estimated costs, as everybody understands, the costs have gone up tremendously in the last few months, but we're, we're lucky to say that our project has not gone as, up as much as inflation in the world has gone up. It has gone up $3 million, which is not a drop in the bucket, but it's about a 10%, 11% increase. Opera funds remain the same, we've got 6.4 million coming in from Opera, and then that borrowing would be about $24 million. Next slide. Essentially, we're here tonight for your board to accept that report and approve us to move forward into the design development phase, that's the next step. We will complete design and development estimate and update the board in August. We'll do another update in mid-September, and as we stated before, the project bid date will be in January, towards the end of January, and we should be awarding the bid in March of 2023. Then close it out, Chief Carroll has a few comments he'd like, like to say.
Good evening, thank you. I just want to reinforce the fact that we are very excited, the morale is high in the department. In lieu of some of the articles out there on Stoughton, we're, we're very excited about moving forward with the process. It's important not to let it stall out. We have a lot of members who are actively in. We have a lot of members who are actively involved in our interdepartment new station. These men and women are going out on their own, looking at other stations. They're actively participating in, we have probably two meetings per month and the room is active when we have a meeting and they have a lot of input. And again, I'll reinforce that morale is very high. So that's exciting. We're here to update the board. I think this is important. You set us forth with a task and it's important that we constantly update you on status. I think it's coming to the end of the fiscal year. It's important to have it now. It's also about transparency. There is nothing that, you know, there's no changes in schematic design. We're not trying to get anything by inflation has hit the world, it's hit the U.S. and it's hit us. There are other departments that I know the chiefs, they're way under budget. They are, and they're already in the middle of the process. We're lucky enough, it looks like we're planning it out, we're keeping an eye on it, we're trying to be fiscally responsible. The square footage that was dropped was basically out of schematic design. We didn't lose anything operationally as, and the architect can back me up on this, as we started to look at it and looking at each room, we were able to kind of adjust things and it kind of naturally started losing a little bit of square feet footage. The whole idea of it is we're trying to do it operationally, it's going to work. I promised this town we would have an operational fire station and I won't back down from that. If it comes to, you know, having to lose something that's going to impact the future of the fire station, I won't put my name to it. I promise you. It's going to be an operational fire station, that's what we promised, and it's going to be here for the future. So in closing, I want to thank the board. We're asking you, like we were saying earlier, we work for you. You put us out here, we have been working nonstop. The emails going between the assistant chief and the architect with Palmeroy and then our interdepartment work group has been nonstop and we're excited. So I thank you.
Thank you, chief, and thank you, Mr. Tisdell. So I'll just jump right into the financing. What I recall, the town meeting, we approved it $27.3 million and we're still within that scope, we're under that timeline, I mean, under that dollar threshold. And then, so I, please explain that. And then also, with that said, I've attended several MMA board meetings and in these meetings are a variety of town managers, you know, local within Massachusetts and select board members, and we're all talking about the same thing, the impact of inflation on the cost and the cost of goods, the cost of doing business. So I can understand how this would increase, but we're still under that approval. But would you please address that just so we can just answer any concerns or questions in that realm? Thank you.
Sure. One of my concerns that I had looking at this, you know, we had an increase in the budget, obviously nobody likes to hear that. My first question was, are we still authorized to borrow up to the 27.3 million per the town meeting article? I wanted to make sure the wording was proper, I wanted to make sure it was transparent with town meeting. We asked town council to review the language in the article and we asked bond council to review the language in the article and the town has authorized to borrow up to $27.3 million. We've got that clarification in the presentation. We have just under $24 million.
Thank you. I will open it up to my fellow board members and I'll start with whoever has questions. Mr. Gito, you looked up first.
I spent some time today talking with the chief and deputy chief. I have no questions. I'm very satisfied with what their presentation and when the time comes, if you'd like, I could move to proceed, but if somebody else might want to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll continue around the room with the fellow board members to see if they have any questions. How about you, Mr. McCrisky?
No, thanks.
How about you, Vice Chair Cave?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions, pretty straightforward stuff. So the first thing, we know, the two things that you highlight are decrease in square footage, increase in cost, neither of which concern me, especially for the short term. And I think that they are, given the inflationary environment in which we're in, I think the thoughtful compromises to make for this project. The project is beyond essential. This was something we had to have been done decades ago. So my support is 100% behind it and please believe me, I'll literally do anything necessary to get us past the finish line. So the short-term concerns, understand. Question I've had, I think this has been addressed in the past, but I just want to hear it again, if necessary, is if at some point in the future, if we need to expand, you know, in 10 years, we decide we, now we need an extra 2,000 square feet, how difficult will that be? Is the building kind of designed right now to accommodate any sort of increases in square footage? If the world changes and now, you know, people can borrow money like crazy and we have a need, how easy is it for us to sort of pivot and make any changes that we need at some future time?
I'll hand the actual building part of that over to our architect, Glenn. But the site, from a site standpoint, which that's my expertise, there's obviously more than, there's enough room to expand the site in several different ways. But from the building standpoint, if you don't mind answering that question, Glenn?
Please state your name.
Yep. Glenn Galred from Dorn Widya Architects, project manager. I think specifically, there's room on two sides to expand the building if needed, but I think what's important to understand is that we've got it covered for now and for a good chunk of time to come. To your point, if firefighting radically changed and they needed a piece of equipment twice the size, yes, they could add a few more bays next to the maintenance bay. Plenty of room for staff now and looking ahead and to support them. It's, I think we've right-sized this to within square feet. I think the point about the emails was funny. I think it was 340 emails in the last two months and the design team appreciates the responsiveness of both the town engineering department and the fire department. So I think we've nailed it as best we can.
Excellent. I appreciate the answer to the question. I think I'm speaking for everybody when I say that there may be some compromises that we have to make, given just the cost of things. When we went through this the first time, we used estimates and estimates are estimates is what it is. But the thing we just, you know, I'm telling you what you already know, I'm just going to allow though, can't, we can't compromise on quality, you know? We've done that for a very long time. And having our firefighters have a building that's, that is commensurable with their dedication to what they do for our town, for the risks they take for us, for the things they're willing to do on our behalf. So as long as there's no compromises to the quality of the building and their mission can be satisfied with it, you have my full support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carrera, did you have any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, I just have comments. I want to thank the chief, Mark, and the assistant chief, Jack Mecumba, for bringing out the fact that there's been a lot of questions about how we were going to fund this and it's been explained that it was incorporated in, but the original debt exclusion covered less. The only question I have is what's the impact on the resident? How much is it going to raise that? What were we told it was $34 or was it $64? I can't quite remember now.
Are you prepared to give an answer to that question?
We are, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Tisdell. Go ahead, Mark.
Yes, I do have the answer to that question. The original goal Robin was looking for was somewhere in the $20 to $25 per quarter range. When we went out the bond, the project, we got the low interest rate. It actually came in at $1,350 per quarter, $50 annually on a $450,000 home. Right now, it's an estimate, we're at the $3 million. Again, we're not telling you it's going to be $3 million, it could be $2.5, it could be $3.5, but say we assume $3 million, it'll add $9 per quarter. So nine plus $1,350 will be $2250 still in that range of the original goal.
People get scared when they hear $3 million and they don't realize the way it gets spread out. It's, I don't want to say it's minuscule, but it is. To give the firefighters what they've needed for a long time and they're happy, I want to see you guys stay happy, so.
If I can just add to that, too, we have not stopped looking for other funding options. You know, even today, we just got word we received $250,000 direct, wide, directly into the general fund from our Medicare to offset for FY '21. There's also some things we have moving along that may be able to cover. One, you know, other grants that are out there, possibly looking at some, where the state may be able to put in $2.5 to $3 million. I know they just did it for Sherborn, so I think we can definitely look at other options and I think they're real. I'm not just saying that, but, you know, maybe we can have another discussion another time. It's just, there are options out there and we're looking hard, we're not stopping. We understand the impact it has on the community.
Thank you, chief, for keeping the doors open.
Are there any other questions? I'll just go around the table. I don't see anyone but they're... You have my full support. So now I will accept a motion to accept the report.
So made.
Second.
Second. All in favor, Mr. Gito?
Aye.
Mr. McCrisky?
Aye.
Mr. Carrera?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cave?
Aye.
And I vote yes as well. You have our support.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. We have a great evening.
Thank you for leadership, too. Thank you.
Without any other comments, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous and I vote aye as well. Good night, everyone, and see you next time. Thank you.